All right, do I have a motion adjourned back to an open meeting?
So moved.
You have a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are back in open session. The next item is 306.24, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Dignan was unable to be here with us tonight, but I believe Ms. Perry, you're going to be presenting tonight?
Absolutely. Well, actually, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Colbert, the superintendent of Wayne RISA, who is here with her team to present the Wayne RISA proposed budget.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, come on, good evening. Come on, come on, when it's the opportunity to come together and when you have your health and strength, it's always a good evening, or a good morning, or a good afternoon, so I'm going to say that again, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, and I am very honored and I thank you all for allowing us to have this time to the Board of Education, to the President, Vice President, Secretary Treasurer, to all of the trustees. I thank you to the administrative team of Wayne Westland. We are excited to be here. We are, I am here, I am the superintendent, Dr. Davida Colbert, of Wayne RISA, Regional Educational Service Agency, along with Deputy Superintendent Kelly Bowe, which many of you all know because she spent many years here at Wayne Westland. So I'm excited for Kelly to serve as Deputy Superintendent of Operations at Wayne RISA, along with Drew McMeacon, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, who will provide the presentation today. The presentation is of the 2024-2025 proposed budget for Wayne RISA, of which the Board of Education here and each of the 33 communities or the 33 school boards in Wayne County are asked to take action on. We were asked to come and provide an overview and to answer any questions, and I'm hoping that you would be receptive to that. We won't be before you long. In front of you, Board of Education, you will find, I know that it was sent electronically, but today we also brought in an additional copy of the individual summary of services that is before you. So Drew came up and put one in front of you, but I think it may have been printed as well. Hopefully, and I do believe because of the email that I forwarded, that you also received the presentation for this evening, because I did not want you to have anything in front of you that you had not seen before today. It's most appropriate to give you time to be able to dive into it, think about it, and then be ready for the presentation. Without further delay, I'd like to turn it over to Drew McMeacon, and please understand that at the end of the presentation and the questions, you will see us exit because we're presenting again. We have another meeting afterwards tonight, so we're doing a little bit of runaround, but we're just glad and excited to be here with you. And next time you all are wearing red, let me know. I will have on red, which is my favorite color. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Colbert. And thank you, Board members, for having me here. I have a very quiet voice, so I want to make sure I get in the microphone. That should be good. All right, tonight... There we go. Tonight, we are going to go over the proposed 24-25 budget. And it was presented to our Board of Education for the first time on Wednesday, April 17. Our budget information, in addition to the budget information that was forwarded to the Board, can also be found at our website under Wayne RISA, www.waineresa.net, under About, and then Reports. And here's a screenshot of what you'll see when you'll get there. There's three files that are located on our website. The Budget Presentation booklet, the Frequently Asked Questions document, and then also the Suggested Motion Model Resolution for this evening for the Board to consider to approve Wayne RISA's budget. Voting districts received our proposed budget on Tuesday, April 30, which was prior to the May 1 deadline in statute. And as a reminder, there is a statute that says that local district school boards need to vote before June 1 to either accept or deny, and if you decide to deny our budget, you're supposed to submit written recommendations for our Board to consider. You're only considering the general fund budget in the vote by statute. We include all of our fund budgets, and we'll go over a few of them tonight for transparency, but also because some of our other budgets directly impact your district. We had three opportunities for one-hour Zoom meetings for Board members to attend if they chose throughout the first couple of weeks of May, and we had a budget hearing at our school board meeting on May 15. Again, this is what the budget looks like on the cover page, and it's located on our website as well. I'm going to start with a really high-level overview of all of our funds. So the bar graph on the left in this shows all of our funds at Wayne RISA and their relative size compared to our total funds. So we start at the top with our general fund, followed by our enhancement fund, Act 18 Fund, Co-op Fund, Funded Projects Fund, Special Education Operating Fund, Medicaid Fund, and finally, our capital projects at the bottom. As you can see, our two largest funds are our Funded Projects Fund and our Act 18 Fund, followed by our Enhancement Milage Fund. And we'll be discussing most of these this evening. Then on the right side, we see in the blue bar, these are the funds that are directly distributed funds. So these are funds we receive via through grants or through millages that we directly distribute to constituent districts across the county. And we see that $587 million, or just under 80% of our total funds of $745 million, are directly distributed to districts. So here, we see a breakdown of last year, which is our most recently completed school year, of the funds that were received specifically by Wayne Westland Community School District. In total, Wayne Westland received directly distributed funds of $25.8 million, and the bulk of that was for special education funding. If we start at the top, kind of at 12 o'clock, if we think of this as a clock, and move to the right, we see our county Act 18 funding for paraprofessionals. Those are for one-on-one paraprofessionals that are in your district for students that are in the general education population. And so those are one-on-ones that are provided so that students can be in their least restrictive environment and be in the classroom with their peers. This is funding outside of our center program funding, which is the next really large section. The purple section here is our Act 18 funding for special education programs that Wayne Westland operates. And we see that's just about $10.6 million. This includes distributions to Make You Whole for all of your center programs that you operate. And for those of you that don't know what center programs are, those are countywide programs for students with specific needs that local districts operate, and students from all over the county with those needs can come and receive services in specialized classrooms. This section also includes distributions we've been able to make out of our Act 18 funds for the last few years. They're one-time payments in quotes, because they've happened multiple times. But we've also been able to give a portion of funding for special education costs that were not reimbursed by the state. And then at the bottom in green, we see our county Act 18 funding for special education transportation costs. And in '22, in '23-24, the current year, was the first year we were able to fully fund special education transportation costs across the county. So districts received 100% reimbursement after their state aid for the cost of special ed transportation. Next, we see our federal IDEA funding, just over $6.6 million. IDEA is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We have Medicaid funding of about $1 million. And what's exciting about Medicaid funding is that these are services that your staff members are performing anyways. And when they perform those services with Medicaid-eligible students, we are able to get reimbursement for districts, so that's cost above and beyond what you would already be doing. We have a category here of other, of $364,000. That's primarily made up of like CTE funding. And then the final large pie piece in the navy blue is our regional enhancement milage funding. Last year, Wayne Westland received just over $3.7 million from the Wayne County Regional Enhancement Milage. And then to round it out, we have our state early literacy grant and our state preschool grade start readiness program reimbursements. So those are all of the funds that were distributed last year. And this chart is located on the final page of your Summary of Services brochure, if you'd like to look at it in closer detail. Going back to our chart here, the same chart on the left that shows the relative proportion of our funds, but the chart on the right now, the orange part at the top is our operating funds. So you can see, if you stacked our general fund, cooperative fund, capital projects fund, and special education operating funds on top of each other, they make up less than 6% of our total funds altogether. And on our next slide, if we take that orange slice and break it down a little bit further, we see that of that orange slice, for all of our operating funds, 28% are spent on indirect services or administration costs. Those are things like Board of Education costs, administration, human resources, our local internal IT team, payroll, finance, and capital projects. And then 72% of our operating funds are our direct services that we provide to our constituents throughout the county. And those are things like education consultants or special education consultants, our event services, our assistive technology team, which provides technology for students with special needs, and then transportation services, our IT consortium, which houses all of our financial software, student information database, that's called SMART, and MyStar respectively, and then field services, which are Wayne RISA's staff that go in and perform certain functions, such as IT or payroll when districts need it. I do not expect you to be able to read this slide. It's only up here as a snapshot of what the general fund is, but there's a large arrow to the bottom right of the screen, and it's just pointing out there's a link there where you can get more detailed information. If you go to our website and click on that link, it'll show you department by department where our funds are being spent. I don't have time tonight to go through all of those, but if you are interested in some more detail, it's available there. Our general fund budget, now I'm going to get into individual funds. We have revenues of just over $25 million and expenditures of just over $26.5 million. Included in our expenditures on the general fund are $6.8 million in subsidy of our cooperator fund. And what that is doing is helping keep the fees for our IT consortium and our educational services down for local districts. And we'll talk about them more when we get to the co-op fund. We do have a budget of fund balance at June 30 of just over $20.5 million, $20.8 million, which represents a decrease of $1.5 million in fund balance. There's a couple of things that we get asked about our fund balance, that the general fund fund balance seems high when you compare it to a local fund balance, when you say you have almost a $21 million fund balance and $26 million in expense. One thing that we need to point out, though, is that the general fund covers all of our operating funds in total. So that brings it up to $42.8 million that it's covering with those, when you've taken into account the budgets for all four of those funds. But also, the general fund can subsidize any of our other funds. So, for example, recently, we had career counselor grant that was no longer offered, and Wayne RISA was able to use some of our general fund dollars to continue that program until we were able to secure another source of funding. We ended up being able to secure about 50% of the funding required, and the remainder comes out of the cooperative fund. And so that's general fund dollars being used to continue really important services for students across Wayne County. Like, another example I give is we have an early literacy grant right now with literacy coaches in districts to be able to provide services and coaching to improve our reading in our schools. If that grant went away, that's about a $4 million a year grant. Our Board could choose to use some of this fund balance to cover that program in the event that the funding went away. The other thing to point out here is that our Board has been very intentional with the use of fund balance, and we are not able to get a sinking fund or a bond. So when we have to replace a roof on our building, like we did last year, that has to come out of general fund. And so we have to save up funds to make sure that we can cover any of those capital costs. And I'll pause here if there's any questions related to the general fund. I can answer those at this time.
I just have one question, because I know you guys have that renewal coming up, the renewal millage. Is that going to be like on the August ballot or November? Because I know we're trying to do something with the Headley Fund so we don't lose money, so we're just trying to make sure that we're not, you know, having too many things on the ballot at the same time. When are you guys putting that proposal out?
Yep, so we're not able to act until all of the districts vote on the measure. So we have to have at least 50% of the boards representing 50 of the students in Wayne County approve that we want to put that on. But we're proposing that if that is approved, that it would go on the November ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just, you know what, Drew, follow up with that, that that is actually an additional ask that will be coming before the Board of Education, once the Wayne County Treasurer gives us the final numbers. So the, all Boards of Education, LEAs and DSA's, will be asked to take a look at the resolution, which, once we have the 50% that Drew just talked about, then it will, in fact, become a November 5 ballot initiative. If we do not have that, then it cannot become a November 5 ballot initiative. In the event that that resolution, that those resolutions don't come in, districts will no longer receive the $360 per pupil that they receive currently because of the Wayne RISA, the Wayne Regional Educational Services Agency Enhancement ballot that passed in '16 was renewed in 2020, and so it has to be renewed again in November to continue beyond '28.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Nope, all right. Then we'll move on to some of our others, and again, not expecting to read it, but again, pointing out, for our cooperative fund, we do have another link that you can see department-level detail of how the cooperative fund is budgeted and the type of services that come out of our cooperative fund. Our cooperative fund has $15.6 million in revenue. As I mentioned before, $8.7 million of that comes from fees from districts for the use of our IT consortium services, our financial information database called SMART, our student information database called MyStar, and Polyplot, as well as a few others. And we subsidize $6.8 million from our general fund to keep those fees down for districts. Our expenditures on this fund are $17.1 million, and our fund balance is being used for enhancements to our product lines that I just mentioned, as well as document storage solutions for the entire county. The Enhancement Milage Fund, which we just, was brought up by the Board member, thank you for that question. We budgeted $106 million, both in revenue and expenditures. And as a reminder, 100% of the Enhancement Milage funds are directly distributed to public schools and public school academies by law. Nothing, not even one penny, is held by Wayne RISA for either an administrative fee or we don't receive any of the funding. We collect, or we receive the collections from Wayne County, and then we distribute them on a proportional basis. So what that means is, whatever your school district count is compared to the total count, we calculate a percentage, and you receive that percentage of the funds. So it can shift a little bit throughout the year. If your count is going up and the rest of the county is going down, you may start to receive more, and the vice versa would be true. And currently, there are approximately 256,000 students in Wayne County. And then our Act 18 fund budget, we have revenues of over $224 million and expenditures of $276 million. We do have $55 million in one-time payments budgeted to districts, and those are budgeted at the same level that they were budgeted in '23-24. And some of those one-time payments are the unreimbursed portion of special education costs. So the state reimburses 28% of those costs on state aid. We're picking up about $6,000 per student was what we paid out, per special ed FTE, I apologize, not per total student, per special ed FTE, which is a count of special education students, students with IEPs. And then we also have been able to fully reimburse all of the unreimbursed costs of special education transportation, and that is covered about 70% by the state, and we picked up the other 30% this year. In addition, districts who operate center programs are receiving 3% of their total center program budget and discretionary funds for use in the center program, and primarily, we're seeing people address capital projects or capital improvements in their buildings for the classrooms. So that could be used for things like carpeting. It could be put towards part of a boiler repair or a roof repair. Whatever districts choose to do with that funding is up to them. But it must be used for Act 18 students only, cannot be used for general fund, because that's designated funds. And the Act 18 milage, just for your reference, is the public Act 18, which authorized counties to levy milage for the purpose specifically of educating students with IEPs. And that money can only be used for students with IEPs. And we are budgeting almost $50 million in fund balance usage to continue those one-time payments. And then, I'm not going to go through any of these in detail, but I just wanted to make sure you knew or were aware. Our special education operating budget houses our special education consultant team, our general supervision and accountability team, and our Wayne assistive technologies teams. Our Medicaid fund, as I mentioned earlier, is funding for students who receive services that are Medicaid-eligible. Districts can receive a proportion of the staff salaries back based on the Medicaid funding formula, and that those distributions totaled are totaling about $18 million in budget. Our Funded Projects Fund is over $354 million in federal, state, and local grants. That's where we house all of our grant funds. And then we do have a capital projects fund, as I had mentioned, that comes from a transfer from the general fund. And we have $2.9 million in capital projects budgeted, both at the education center, which is our main building, and next door to our annex building. And that wraps up my presentation, and I want to again, open it up for any questions from the Board.
Just have one more. I just have one more question. I know we had the COVID and the learning loss, and I know a lot of our children are suffering from a lot of behavioral problems. Was it a steep increase with the IEPs with the Act 18 after COVID? Like, did that affect your budget at all with, you know, additional issues with the children after the COVID and mental health and learning disabilities?
Yeah, so from our perspective on Act 18, Act 18 is, we did see an increase in costs on reporting for special education costs across the county. Those are reported on the SE 4096 Final Cost Report, and then also the SE 4094 Cost Report. So we do see an overall increase on spending on special education. From our budget side, though, we are working primarily with districts with center programs, and the center program students are a fairly stable population. They're the students with the most needs, so they need the most support and are oftentimes in separate facilities or separate classrooms. We didn't see a dramatic difference there.
Thank you.
Yep.
No?
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Grove and Ms. Polakovic, who will be introducing our Legacy Project winners. So I think we have a whole lot of people about to walk right in.
We do, we do. So in just a moment, we have some students that will be coming in, and parents would like to see their student get their award to be recognized. So if you're on this side, if you could kind of make way so that we could have some parents come in so that they could take some pictures, and then you're welcome to come back in, and our students will kind of just make a loop around, so... Yeah, there's a couple of seats down up front. Just, I want to make sure that our families can see their students be recognized.
Can we do still have the overflow room down the hall?
And many of them will come in and take their kiddos so they can get to bed for the morning. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Polakovic. I am the Executive Director of High School Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm going to be joined by Kate Broll, the Executive Director of Elementary in Cherry Grove, to help us introduce our Legacy Project. The Legacy Project was something new this year, and we're really excited about it. So what is a Wayne Westland legacy? So our students were able to apply to be a legacy for their school based on academic performance, leadership, school community service, and character. So there were lots of different attributes that our students have that made them, made them a legacy. We looked at students in 5th, 8th, and 12th grade, and they were able to apply. Their applications were reviewed, and students were chosen based on how they portray those attributes. Lifetouch, who we partner with, was able to donate posters to us. They were able to take some professional pictures of all of our students, and they will have posters that are displayed in their building as well, so that students from years to come will be able to see these students. So we're extremely proud of all of our students and all they do for our community. So right now, I'll invite Ms. Broll up, and we're going to make some room for our elementary kiddos to come. Right around this way, Mr. Cox. Do you want them to go this way, or you want them to go in front? Kate? Okay. All right, our elementary legacy winners. And you can stop and see Ms. Grove for your certificate. So we have Marcus Nekarts from Edison Elementary. Congratulations. Alexander Selix from Elliott Elementary. Idan Akoto Wayafi. Congratulations. From Graham Elementary, we have Vivian Nukali. Also from Graham Elementary, we have Sawyer Watichah. From Hamilton Elementary, we have Haley Rittendale. From Hamilton Elementary, we have Hendricks Sanford. Yeah, bring the next group. We have Jalen Dixon from Hicks Elementary. Jaden Williams is next, but Jaden Williams from Hicks is not here tonight. We have Zoe Betcher from Roosevelt McGrath. Also from Roosevelt McGrath, Ayanna Scott. The next student from Schweitzer Elementary is not here tonight, Ella Riley. But we do have, from Schweitzer Elementary, Emma Reed. The names were mixed up. She knows. We'll get it figured out. Congratulations, Tony. From Taff Galloway Elementary School, we have Kennedy Canover. From Walker Wintzer, we have Sophia Coman. From Walker Wintzer Elementary, we have Asia Patrick. And from Wildwood Elementary, we have Wyatt Combs.
And from Wildwood Elementary, we have Wyatt Combs, congratulations. And also from Wildwood Elementary, we have Sophia Moyer, congratulations. Next up, Ms. Sherry Grove will present our middle school students. Good evening, welcome. We're excited to present our middle school legacy recipients. First, we have from Adams Middle School, Haley Hensler. Also from Adams Middle School, Jamal Jackson. And also from Adams Middle School, DeCarlo Union. Next, from Stevenson Middle School, we have Brianna Choice. I'm sorry, Brianna's not with us this evening, but next we have from Franklin Middle School, And from Franklin Middle School, Cameron Redd. And Alexa Zolkowski.
Excuse me. They asked me if we could have you stop because some of the families haven't made it in yet.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Grove, I'm sorry, these are the middle school families. We have to do traffic flow, so they missed their awards. If we could just...
No problem, we, no problem. We're happy to honor these students again. All right, let's start with Haley. Yep, we'll start with Haley. We can do this again. We love this part. This is our favorite part. All right. Okay, from Adams Middle School, we have Haley Hensler. From Adams Middle School, Jamal Jackson. And also from Adams Middle School, DeCarlo Union. From Stevenson Middle School, but not in attendance this evening, Brianna Choice. From Franklin Middle School, we have Jessica Gonzalez, also not here. And next, from Franklin Middle School, we have Cameron Redd. Next, from Franklin Middle School, Alexa Zolowski. She's coming. And I'm going to fix that because it's actually Zolkowski. And next, from Stevenson Middle School, Liv Fuqua. Next, from Stevenson Middle School, we have Bradley May. Also from Stevenson Middle School, Winter White. And lastly, from Stevenson Middle School, we have, oh, Jessica Gonzalez. Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce Kim Polakovic again to the podium. She is going to share with you our high school legacy recipients.
All right, last but not least, we have our high school. These are our seniors that are about to leave us. How many days?
Gee.
Gee, you guys are about to leave high school and get that diploma. How many days?
Two and a half.
Oh, there's a little bit more spirit. We need to work on that, but here are our twelfth grade high school winners. Oh, sorry, we'll wait till our families come in.
Sorry, folks, it's a little crowded out there to get everybody. Drew's a lobby there.
We good? Okay. From John Glenn High School, Alex Muse. Also from John Glenn High School, Reagan Neely, not here today. From John Glenn High School, Madison Potten. From John Glenn High School, Kaylee Shepherd, not here today. And lastly, from John Glenn High School, Kirsten West. We had several of our William D. Ford recipients that are at the city of Wayne, I believe. Oh, they did, they're back. They're like the Flash, here they are. All right, we'll start with Aiden Parker from William D. Ford. Jessica Guadalupe Cruz Amida from William D. Ford. Morgan Woodson from William D. Ford. Alyssa Fuller from William D. Ford. Flip Nowakowski from William D. Ford. From Wayne Memorial High School, Kimberly Varren. From Wayne Memorial High School, Angelo Gomez. From Wayne Memorial High School, Crystal Fawn. Also from Wayne Memorial High School, Deshaun White. And lastly, from Wayne Memorial High School, Ava Williams. We have Sukie Sanchez Vasquez from the Wayne Westland Innovative Academy. And our last legacy winner is Chase Sanders from the Wayne Westland Innovative Academy. Congratulations, students. Enjoy your last two and a half days, and graduation will be here before we know it. And thank you to all of you. This was a really fun project for us to recognize some of our students who have made some great achievements in lots of different areas and make our school community a better place. So thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Mrs. Walsh, we still have one more before you.
All right, good evening, everyone. As we approach the end of another successful school year, we are reminded that some of our Wayne Westland staff are in a time of transition. We want to take a moment to express our deep gratitude for the many years of service, dedication, and hard work our retirees have given to Wayne Westland Community Schools. Their contributions have not gone unnoticed, and we are truly grateful for their service. This year's retirees represent every employee group in the district. The earliest starting date was nineteen seventy-seven. Collectively, our retirees dedicated over one thousand years of service to our community. I'm going to repeat that. Our retirees dedicated over one thousand years of service to our community. Congratulations to the two thousand twenty-four Wayne Westland Community School retirees. As a small token of appreciation, each retiree will receive an engraved WWCS apple and a personalized certificate. We'll also take a group picture outside of the board office to memorialize the special group. At this time, everyone please stand to applaud the two thousand twenty-four Wayne Westland retirees. And I would also ask all of the retirees to please step outside of the boardroom. We're going to take a picture in the main lobby.
Can they do a runaround? Can they do a one through? Can you see? I want to see them. Can I let them come through? I don't even know. I want to see. Hey.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're going to wait just a minute while they take that picture, so Dr. Feely can get back.
Is some seats available? Y'all like to have a seat?
We're going to get started here. Next, we have financial status presentation by Brendan Walsh from Michigan Benchmark.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I'm just going to check this to make sure it's working. It is. Okay, my name is Brendan Walsh. I'm the founder of Michigan Benchmark. I'm happy to be here tonight. I thank the board and members of the administration who are here to listen, and for those who have helped me prepare for tonight, learn a lot about what's going on with the district, with the finances. I've published a lot of materials, hopefully some of you have seen. I'm here tonight to talk just briefly, I'm trying to hold this to fifteen minutes, to introduce Michigan Benchmark and how I believe that Michigan Benchmark can help the Board of Education and the community here in Wayne Westland. I did create a narrated video of this presentation, it runs about forty-five minutes, that hopefully members of the board and then subsequently hopefully members of the public, if they were to so choose. And I'm going to try to move this, through this briskly to give us an opportunity for questions, but I do ask members of the board to please interrupt me with questions if you have them. So Michigan Benchmark, I founded Michigan Benchmark a couple of years ago. I believe there is a gap in terms of how the public education system in Michigan is served in terms of the data organization and available to boards of education like yourselves. I've organized Michigan Benchmark to serve exclusively Michigan public schools because I believe the unique characteristics of how Michigan funds public schools and how the state organizes public schools merits its own unique service offering. My service offerings are listed along the bottom, but they effectively present a past, present, and future view of school district finances in a manner that allows members of the Board of Education, the administration, and therefore members of the public to get the best possible, most complete view of a school district's financial operations and results in relation not only to its own past, but to the school districts all across the state. That is why I've used this term benchmarking, so that we can cross-reference and then subsequently try to hone in on what is normal and what is out of normal. So the intention is to enhance the trust between boards of education, the administration, and the general public, all for the purposes of putting districts in the best position to serve students and to create the optimal financial environment for students to be served the best and their families. Most of the data I share spans back to two thousand and three, and it's a way of allowing us to benchmark a district against its own history, to see some of the anomalies in its budget patterns and its results. That's what this slide shows. It's got three graphs. The upper left shows operating results. Operating results are the total of a general fund revenue minus all general fund expenses. So when that number goes below zero, that means that district ran a shortfall for that year. So you can see the steep drop from the results from two thousand and twenty-three, which we're now aware of, in the upper right, that will show the final impact on fund equity of those operating results. So if you run a shortfall for a year you're operating, your fund equity goes down. And then in the lower left, that same fund equity is represented as a percentage of district revenue. That's a valuable metric to use because it allows districts to compare themselves to one another, to get a relative sense of the district's financial health and its trajectory. So this is a stark example of how the results of two thousand and twenty-three are reflected in a chart like this. That's a case of internal benchmarking. Here's our first view of external benchmarking, where we start to compare those same operating results, and this time it's represented as an operating margin. Simply put, an operating margin are the operating results, which are the revenue minus expenses divided by expenses. So the purpose of that is that it normalizes all of the data to cross-reference and compare districts to one another, to get a general sense of how they are performing relative to each other. In general, when you have healthy financial conditions across the state, you're going to see positive operating results and positive operating margin. Here, in this case, we see in two thousand and twenty-three, the stark example of Wayne Westland's results from two thousand and twenty-three that resulted in a negative ten percent operating margin, which was substantially lower and in a sense historically low. which was substantially lower and in a sense historically low. So here, you get a sense of benchmarking internally and then benchmarking externally. I'll briefly introduce, but I won't go through the details, of how Michigan school districts report and organize their finances. On the left-hand side is what's known as the functional view of district finances. And some of these are intuitive, where you can see instructional costs split between basic instruction and added needs instruction. On the right-hand side of, I'm sorry, in the right-hand bar of the left-hand slide, you see all the unique categories of support services. So in broad strokes, school district expenses are going to be categorized either as instruction or support services. And this helps us understand how districts are spending in each of these categories on a normalized basis. From there, what we begin to do is to take a look again at the history of Wayne Westland's proportional spend across all of those instructional expense and non-instructional expense categories or instruction and support service expenses. By normalizing all the data as a percentage of revenue, it allows viewers to get a sense of the relative investment levels of all of those different expense categories because ultimately, you're only able to spend a certain amount. And if you spend above 100%, you're going to be operating at a shortfall. So in the case of the upper part of this slide, you can visually see what were the changes in the proportional spend in these expense categories that ultimately led to total expenses exceeding 100% of revenue. So that black dotted line across the top of the top graph represents 100% of your revenues. And if the spending went above that, as it did in 2013, as well as in 2023, that results in the district operating at a shortfall for that year. Transitioning from there, the bottom half of this slide compares the 2023's proportional spend in all of these categories across, in this case, these are districts in Wayne and Oakland County that have enrollment between 5,000 and 10,000 students. And it's helpful to compare districts of similar size because they have similar characteristics of scale. So for example, districts of similar size are going to maybe expect to have a generally consistent proportion of their spend on, say, general administration, whereas perhaps a smaller district that has to hire the same number of people might have a higher proportion. So that's why we like to keep the proportional views consistent across districts of some similar sizes in order for us to derive some conclusions about what are the characteristics across districts that result in them operating at a shortfall or at a surplus. So that's the general gist of what this slide is communicating. And there, on the bottom half, you can get a particularly good sense of how Wayne Westland's 2023 that resulted in the $17 million shortfall compared proportionally to other districts. Very briefly, I want, if people are familiar with the impact of enrollment on Michigan school district finances, this is a 12-year view of the history of enrollment in Wayne Westland. I wanted to just make a point here about the cruelty effectively of Michigan school district financial operations and that with that decline in revenue, the summary point here is that if Wayne Westland had had the same enrollment in 2023 as it had in 2012, it would have received $30 million more of revenue. That's a lot of revenue loss for a district to swallow in a relatively short period of time. On the other side of the coin, you can see of the last three years, Wayne Westland's enrollment has actually been fairly consistent from year to year. But I think this does help remind us about how Michigan funds public schools and the impact of enrollment on school district finances. This view takes the 2023 expenditures and subtracts their 2022 levels. So this is a particularly valuable view because we know that the results in 2023 were so much worse than any other year, and they're particularly worse than 2022. So as we begin to try to diagnose what happened in 2023, views like this are helpful, and we have many, many more of them in our battery of reports. But I just want to make the general observation that in actuality, from 2022 to 2023, Wayne Westland's revenues increased quite a bit, by $35 million, from year to year. So revenue wasn't so much the problem in 2023. On the expenditure side, however, from 2022 to 2023, Wayne Westland's expenditures increased by $53 million. So if you want to try to figure out where does this $18 million shortfall come from, it's $53 million minus $35 million. And it's broken down by all of those unique expense categories on the right-hand side. Again, I don't expect us to draw any conclusions from this. I'm not trying to point out anything too unique here other than to say, these are the kind of insights we can derive from taking a closer look at district finances and doing, in this case, what would be called internal benchmarking. The next slide takes a look again at an internal benchmark, and it compares the ratio of basic education students to basic education teachers on the right-hand side and then the number of basic education teachers on the left-hand side. I think this is just yet another example of the value of benchmarking. So if you look on the right-hand side, historically, at least over the last 12 years, Wayne Westland has never seen its ratio of basic education teachers to basic education students lower than it has been the last two years. And I only make that point to answer a lot of the questions that I hear in the community about, you know, where did this money go and what was it used for? Well, here in this example, and I'm not saying it was a right or wrong decision, a lot of money went to reducing that ratio, which could have very well had some very positive results. But this is the art and science of school district budgeting. There can be decisions, operational decisions, financial decisions that are made that are to the benefit of students. However, that has to be balanced against what is affordable. And I think these are the kind of views that would be, that are helpful for the community, for the board, and for anybody who's trying to gain a better understanding of what transpired over the course of, particularly of last year in Wayne Westland. Here now, we've just referenced that ratio of students to teachers. And here, we zoom out and get that benchmark view, the external benchmark view, because we want to ask the question, okay, we've reduced this ratio to 23. And historically, we know in Wayne Westland, that's one of its lowest levels. But what are other districts doing? Is this what the market, in effect, expects from school districts? And here, you can see such a wide range of ratios, from Anchor Bay on the left there at about just over 25, and I think a couple of the, what you would call the wealthier districts or whole harmless districts, in the case of Bloomfield Hills and Birmingham, that have ratios below 18. So these are the kind of characteristics that has members of the Board of Education and members of the taxpaying public, you get a sense of, how is our district differing from districts moderately similar to us? And you may choose over time to narrow that view to districts that have characteristics that are more consistent with Wayne Westland. The point is, these are the kind of benchmarking activities that help you diagnose where your operational structure and spending might be out of alignment with other districts who are not experiencing financial shortfalls. For the educators in the room, they're familiar with Z-score analysis. And I don't want to go too deep here, other than to say, at Michigan Benchmark, we use Z-scores to evaluate expenditures by category, and we've done it in a variety of metrics here. And for those familiar with Z-scores, it's effectively a measure of variance. And the closer you are to zero, the closer you are to what the majority of districts in your comparison group are. And it's much more rare to get a Z-score that is greater than or exceeds plus one or negative one. It's even more rare to exceed plus one or negative two, and it's far even more rare to get to negative three or plus three. So just to prove the point and to kind of illustrate the point, operating results. And we've mentioned it before, revenues minus expenditures divided by revenues. We see Wayne Westland in 2023, to probably no one's surprise, has a very, very low Z-score, a Z-score of negative three. So I think everybody knows this by now, but my point is, you could cycle across this view to get a similar sense of what those Z-scores are for a variety of different categories, which then puts the board and other decision-makers in position to say, where is our expenditure out of alignment? Because in the mode you're in now, you need to find every one of these that you can. Anywhere that you're substantially beyond negative one, you probably need to take a very good look at and say, why is our expenditure so substantially different than what we would call our peer districts? The next couple of slides, I won't go into a lot of detail, but they just break out the Z-scores across all of the districts in the comparison group in a couple of categories that I wanted to bring to your attention. In this case, this is annual operating results. Again, revenues minus expenses. To no surprise, Wayne Westland has the lowest of these Z-scores, and it's basically a score of negative three, as I mentioned. So we know that that proves to us that the results, not that it needed a lot more proof, that Wayne Westland's results were substantially lower than the peer districts. We do similar things for support services. So these are the two primary categories of the support services expenditures category. So this is anything that is not instruction. Support services are broken out into instruction and non-instructional support, and I've highlighted in yellow where Wayne Westland stands on this Z-score mark. And there on the left, you see instructional support where Wayne Westland is, and I got to look closer because I can't read myself, but it's a two. So that means Wayne Westland was two standard deviations above the mean in instructional support spend. So that's, and it's the number one district listed among these peers. So we know its expenditure was at an effectively unaffordable level in 2023. You could do the same analysis on the right. In this case, it's non-instructional support. So these are examples of like transportation, operations and maintenance, general administration, business administration. And in this case, you can see Wayne Westland leans towards the top and I think is a full standard deviation above. So in general, support services expenses are abnormally high in Wayne Westland. So this has got to be an area of focus going forward. The next slide, our school administration and pupil services looked at on the same standard. So here, we have a case where school administration costs in Wayne Westland are effectively right at the mean. So here, we are in our effort to try to stabilize the district budget and try to identify areas where we have spending anomalies. While we can say with pretty, with surety, you don't have a problem in school administration. So this is an example of how you use Z-scores to isolate your problem points, whereas pupil services skews towards the higher side. So this is an area that we're going to want to take a closer look at. Similarly, on business and general administration, I think this might be an enlightening as well. Business administration, Wayne Westland, near the bottom of this list, and I believe it is a full standard deviation below the mean. So this means, you know, we know that we have our financial problems here, but we can also say with some degree of certainty that it's not in business administration costs. This is how we use Z-scores to isolate our problems. Whereas on the right-hand side, this is general administration, and you can see this one wafts up a little bit higher on the list that you're going to want to take a look at. In conversation with some of the team here, I understand that there's some expenditure categories that may not always be normally listed under general administration. That's the kind of thing you want to look at. And all of this is data that is intended to outfit the Board of Education to ask good questions. That's a good question. Help me understand, why is our general administration cost higher than a norm among our peer groups? That's how you use Z-scores. Moving forward from the historical views, one of the great problems that plagued Wayne Westland this past year was lack of visibility and frequency of updates on what was happening in the budget. Because it wasn't until your audit, in October of the ensuing year, that you received the news that shocked you and everybody else that surprisingly expenditures had exceeded revenues by $17 million. It's my contention that had the Board of Education been able to receive a consistent, reliable battery of monthly reports that showed what were our expenditures relative to our budget plan, what were our revenues relative to our budget plan, and therefore, what are the operating results that we can expect? There could have been an earlier warning that something was wrong. And that's ultimately what you're trying to do. School budgets are very hard to move once they're in motion. Once you adopt the budget, as you will here in a couple of weeks, it can be set, and that cement can dry pretty fast. What you want as a Board of Education is as reliable and as frequent, and by that, I really mean monthly, report on where our expenditures stand against the budget that we worked so hard to approve. So I think this is one of the areas where, particularly with the narrowness of where your fund equity be going forward, your margin for error is low. So that means every month, you really got to be on top of it. And let's say you choose to adopt a budget that's a break-even budget, maybe even a moderate loss. You're going to want, the board, every month is going to want to see, are we holding to it? Where's our variance? Why is there a variance? What can be done? That's what a report like this does. There's a couple others that appear in these views that basically try to offer as much granularity and variant perspective on all of the revenue expenditure categories. Some of these reports may appear duplicative from one to the next, and they didn't that last report just show me the same one. It probably came pretty close, but it's probably just some small shift in perspective that is intended to give as much information with as much granularity as possible to recognize that members of the public and members of the Board of Education are going to read and interpret data in different ways. There has to be a recognition that people read and interpret data in different ways. So therefore, you're going to want to get maybe three or four reports every month that seem to kind of point to the same thing. So hopefully, you are outfitted to say, help me understand the difference between the data in Slide 3 and Slide 4. That's what you want to get to. I think it's particularly important to get that monthly view. The two slides ago, I had a different view. In this case, one of our customers is Brighton Area Schools. I worked with their CFO on this very precise view. This is how he wanted it. This is how he wanted it for his board, and this is what he uses to communicate with his board. So my point is that there can be many different ways to present similar data sets, and it could very well be an iterative process between the board, the administration, the administration, the public, whatever it might be, because we can customize these reports and these views in a way that the most important thing is that you understand them. That you understand them, or even better, frankly, is that it outfits you to ask that good question. Because we want you asking that question every month. Help me understand this number. Why did it change from this month to last month? Why is this one differing from what our budget plan was? Whatever it was. The whole point here is that we want to outfit you all to ask as many questions as you can. And as you get more comfortable with this, you'll start interpreting this data. And then you'll ask, am I interpreting this right? And that's really how we want to build up your confidence in your interpretation of numbers. I'll close it off there, just to say, I'm a data nerd. I'm a school finance nerd. I have been doing this for 20 years. I have helped districts navigate through some horrific times financially. There have been some horrible times in Michigan, back to when I started this craziness in 2003. I've been there, done that, and seen it. And it is a joy to me to work with this kind of data, to work with boards of education, and to work with data and to model it and present it in a way that really drives some unity across the board, from the board to the administration, from the board to the public, from the administration to the public. That's the goal. We want this community having faith in the numbers that you receive. We want this community to expect great batteries of reports every month, and we want to see. to see members of the Board of Education raise their game in terms of their ability to interpret data, or better yet, to ask questions. And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll close out and, and offer to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Mr. Neal?
Well, I have a question. Part of the public.
No, this is, this is.
What is the cost of this?
Sir, this is, this is questions for the board right now. This is not since in comments section. Mr. Neal?
Oh yeah. When you do your reports, where do you obtain your budget information?
So there's two primary sources. The one is the state of Michigan for all of the historical views and all the data that comes from Benchmark. And for the, excuse me, for the current views, it's from your very financial system. You heard the gentleman from Wayne Rees talk about the SMART system. So it would be directly from the SMART system, and the benefit of that is there's no intermediary. It comes right from the horse's mouth, so to speak, and it, it shows you what the number is.
So in our particular case, what if our chief financial officer received eight million dollars a year for a couple of years as input into revenue, but never put it back out because it's supposed to be pass-through money? What would that look like in your information? You wouldn't get additional information to tell you that should have been moved over to expenditures. You would only see it as the revenue coming in.
So in that instance, what you're referring to is that MIPSers pass-through revenue, the retirement pass-through revenue. That would, that, that's, it's got a very specific code, and we use codes to translate a number into a, a short phrase. So in that case, it would be state revenue, I forget what the, it's like, you know, MIPSers offset revenue or something like that.
So you would have been able to identify that?
You would see that. Yeah. I mean, unless there was, it was absolutely miscoded, which I don't believe it was, and I believe that wouldn't happen very often if ever. It, the, the number translates to a short phrase that you could understand. So like state revenue MIPSers offset revenue.
And when you read it from the information sources you talked about, you would, you'd then be able to see, hey, there's something wrong here.
Well, you, in that instance, let's say for sake of discussion that the, the district budgeted for that money to not be directed to MIPSers and that you just put it in your generally available general funds. There would have been a mismatch between what the budget had expected and what the, what the actual results were showing. So in that case, perhaps that money would show up as eight and a half million dollars, which is about what it was in your general fund, generally available revenues. And we'd be like, well, why is our MIPSers offset revenue not recognized? It's off by eight and a half million. Those are the kind of cross-references that you do to understand where the problem is. And I, I don't think it would happen that somebody would, I mean, it's a very specific state code that would indicate that money is to be directed to the MIPSers fund. I hope that, I hope that answers it.
Well, I think you got my point is, would you be able to see it? We couldn't see it.
Well, yeah.
You would be able to see a code associated with that money and somehow it never got moved into outgoing monies.
If it were, you know, in that case, and I, I suspect Wayne Westland was like most districts and said, hey, this, this thing happened here late in the year where the state had extra money or from federal sources or wherever its original source, that was going to be redistributed to the local districts. Very clearly, I mean, there would be no question that this was uniquely sourced funds that, that were to be directed to a very specific purpose. Matter of fact, I mean, I'm sure you've heard it explained. It went in, it went right out. You know, you didn't have a chance to spend it somewhere else. But you would see it show up in the, the month of report because all of a sudden you would have seen a spike of eight and a half million. You would have presumably amended your budget. You should be amending your budget for something like that. And so you'd have a couple of different cuts at it to see that this was, that it was that MIPSers offset money.
Thank you. Ms. Heinz?
I'd like to thank you for your presentation. You've made everything pretty clear because it has been confusing. I noticed like after June, we stopped getting those, we used, every month we'd get those investment reports in our board packet. I noticed they weren't coming in, everything was a blur, and just those charts and just being so detailed. I mean, we really appreciate it because it makes it easier for us to understand. Because I'm trying to think in my head, like I know our state rep Kevin got us like twelve million dollars, and then you have Wayne Rees talking about they had twenty-five million dollars. So I'm just in my head like, okay, we're getting all this money, we're getting higher per pupil funding. How in the heck did that even happen? You know what I'm saying? I'm seeing all this extra money. So I really appreciate, you know, you breaking this down detail by detail, even with the color code, you know, just helping us figure this out. So thank you so much for that explanation.
I try as much as possible to represent data in a graphical format, so like, you know, say a pie chart or something like that, and also a table. Some people like tables, some people like a, a visualized graph. So I like to try to give as many different variations of it as you can. I think the point you make, and I think this, I think those budget amendments are so important because, and that you are going to have them. I mean, you, you should be doing two budget amendments, I think, at least in my view, because every, everything does change. Your enrollment changes, the state aid changes, you've got this, something like the MIPSers. There's always some variation of that. So I think we want to work to get to a point where when you receive a, whether it's the original budget proposal, like you will receive in, in June, or the budget amendments, which you should receive, you know, like after your audit comes in, you're going to, you're going to amend your budget after your audit and most likely. You want to be able to kind of isolate on those deltas. What changed here? Why did it change? Do I understand why revenue went up or why revenue went down? So you're always working off of those, those deltas.
And then one thing too, I know we had the bond, so some of our construction costs were higher than normal as well. So it was, you know, a lot going on with that as well with the general fund. So I mean, I really definitely appreciate that, and I think the audience appreciates that as well because we've just been for months trying to figure it out. And then as a district, we need to get this money for this, you know, eighteen million with the Headley Fund, and we need to have like the community feel comfortable like, okay, we resolved this issue to try to get more money because just like the way from Wayne Rees, if we don't pass that, we'll be losing three hundred something per pupil. So we can't afford to lose any more money, and we can't lose five hundred thousand a year as well. And then we got contracts going, so we have to make sure we pay our staff accordingly. We have to make sure our budget and our district is sustained because Wayne Westland is a humongous district, and we do not want to go under. So, and like you said too, we do have to like check, you know, every so, so often to see where we're at the status, like you said, because things do change. So definitely appreciated with that explanation.
You're quite welcome.
Ms. May?
Yep, thank you. Mr. Walsh, thank you again for this presentation. Very detailed, very helpful. One of the questions that I have is around policy. Understanding that when we talk about moving forward and having to make some changes, we, have you, did you do, do you, as a part of your work, look at districts' policies? And if so, did you look at our policies and do you have suggestions around those as well?
I'm a policy nerd as well, because, and, and I'll tell you why. It's not just because for the heck of it. That is where board authority rests. Board authority begins and ends with policy. Everything else is kind of noise. So when I look at your policies, and I, I shared some suggestions previously, I think there are two or three policies that your policy committee would really benefit from taking a look at in terms of the budget development process, what the board, you know, really the board needs to make its declaration about what works for you. Because it's you on the board that needs to understand this, and it is complicated. And it took me a long time and many hours of diving through spreadsheets and state laws and everything else. But the long story made short is I, I, I think there's three or four policies that your board ought to take a good look at that would, and, and this is a time to do it because you're recovering from a shock, and, which means you've learned something, which is a good thing. You've learned that it didn't work last year because we didn't have a policy that triggered that we were going to adopt. For an example, I think a good one is a budget development parameters policy. And what that would say is, okay, we're the Board of Education, we're directing the administration to begin development of the budget. We may choose to direct you to, you know, protect certain areas. For example, you might say, we don't want to see class size go up at all. So we're going to memorialize that in our budget development parameters. Or, you know, in, in better days, you may be looking at some additional funds and say, you know, we, we, by virtue say of looking at the Benchmark report, we think we're, you know, not investing enough in such and such a category. But things like budget development parameters, monthly financial report policies, I think is a really good one. Because you guys now are learning and have learned the hard way, when you don't have the frequency and reliability of those reports, things happen that you don't want to see happen. So policy is your friend, you know, that, and that unites you all as a board, that, hey, we agree, this is how we're going to run our, run our board. And we're going to hold, quite bluntly, we're going to hold the administration accountable to deliver us these things because we as a board, we need them to discharge our duty. I'm happy to, I could, I'm a policy wonk. I'm happy to share some ideas with you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
I also want to say thank you. I liked it, the colors. I'm a visual learner, and I was able to go over it a couple of times and flip back and then go over some of the things that we have, our financial records that we have, and it was very helpful to me. And I just want to say thank you for taking the time to print this up and share with us. Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure, and I think, you know, someone like yourself, any other member of the board, I, I'm trying, you're my, you're my target customer. You're the ones who I want to understand the numbers.
Please don't put no target on me.
Well, I, it's, it's, because it, I'm, I'm just putting it on a table. This stuff is hard to learn. And, and, and you're put in a tough spot, so.
Right.
You know, I, put me to the test to say, boy, I don't understand this graph. Help me understand. Could you reorganize it so I can understand it better? I'm happy to do that.
Mr. Neal had another question?
Yeah, one more. How do you separate or account for bond expenditures against revenues for bonds versus other expenditures that come in to our budget?
So in your SMART transaction system, again, the one that the Wayne Rees folks referenced, there is a field in your financial system that indicates which account is associated with whatever that line item is. So there is a unique code for general fund, and then there's a unique code for, you know, capital projects funds or, or special education funds for, for that matter. So there's very specific demarcation between budgets of, of different types. Everything that you've seen is from the general fund. I'm, I'm open to the idea if there were a report that you were looking for, for a different fund, I'd, I'd be, I'd happily create it for you. It's like capital projects.
So when you're talking about comparing expenditures versus revenues, you're able to differentiate enough to know that that comparison is really from standard revenues and standard expenditures. The bond stuff is actually kind of separated.
Hundred percent. That's, that's a very clear number. That number's either one or two, you know? And so one is general fund, and those are fish and fowl.
Thank you. And just because I know the question is being asked, are, are you able to share the cost of your service with?
Under ten thousand dollars a year. Which is, just to make clear, this is an ongoing service. You're getting something every month that is updated. So there's, there's constant work to create the next view, and it is customized based on what you want.
And you would be able to give presentations like you did here tonight on a more ongoing basis?
I would love to do that.
Can I just step out a little?
Ms. May?
Is the ten thousand dollars an annual fee?
Annual fee.
Okay.
So on a hundred and forty million dollar budget, I think, given what you just went through, I'd say that's a cheap insurance policy.
Okay. We have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
My pleasure.
For taking the time today.
Hey, thank you. So our final presentation tonight, I'd like to invite Ms. Broll, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. Schaefer up for the ELA resource selection and recommendation.
Good evening, board and community. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We are excited and we are proud to present this recommendation to the board tonight. And before I introduce some of the people who are up here, how many state members do we have who are part of our literacy task force here tonight? Yay, thank you. Our work started with a group of eighty teachers, support staff, coaches, interventionists, principals, on and on. We had a huge group who, who got this started. And Nancy Schalls, our Director of Professional Development and School Improvement, was the spearhead behind leading this task force. And we have transitioned a lot of that work now to our ELA content leader, Janelle Schaefer, who's also a coach on special assignment and works with all of our elementary schools in the district. We have team members from our task force and grade level leaders, Heather Dennis and Sarah Huey. Thank you. So I'll pass it over to Janelle, and she is going to present our recommendation.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Thank you for having us here tonight. We, I'm trying to figure this out. Okay. We requested the board approve the Wayne, the Wayne Westland Community Schools purchase bookworms to implement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for all K-5 classrooms. We intend to implement this until the twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-nine, thirty school year. Oops. The funding source for this program would be covered under the thirty-five J grant. This is a grant from the state of Michigan that is targeted to improve literacy practices and invest in high-quality research-based programming that's based in the science of reading. We submitted a budget and it was approved for this grant, and we received the funds in our May state aid payment. Sorry, I'm going to get it right this time. Okay. So as Kate said, the literacy task force began in the spring of twenty-two, twenty-three. It was a group of educators, and our goal was to kind of focus our work and align all of our resources and assessments to best support what our students need. This is our tier-one standard of care for literacy instruction for all. The work we have done is rooted in the K-five, K-five literacy essentials, and our focus is in the belief that all students deserve access to high-quality learning experiences. Sorry, I keep clicking forward. When we met, we created some core values, and these are the values that we revisit every time we meet. It's kind of our guiding, the things that guide us in our work. So that is to have active, ongoing, difficult conversations to complete the mission, advocate for all task force work, all students and all pre-K-five educators, commitment to design a system of aligned implementation of high-quality instruction with research-based tools across all roles and tiers, and create and uphold a safe space for being open-minded and allow for grace and new learning. And these are the instructional practices from the state of Michigan, and this is kind of our guiding work that we are doing everything with, with, with our literacy alignment. In doing this work, we created a timeline to make sure that this was, our work was comprehensive, but also feasible. And so, like I said before, we focused everything on the literacy essentials. So in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the work that we are doing is focused on essentials four, five, and nine. That's phonemic awareness, phonics, and assessment. This coming year, our work will be focused on essentials two, six, and seven. That is read alouds, vocabulary, and writing. And then next year, we're hoping to focus on essential three, which is small group instruction and tier-two instruction. And with that, we aligned our tools to those essentials. So this school year, we implemented Haggerty for phonemic awareness, really great reading for phonics, and that was in every K-five classroom. And then for assessments, we assessed all of our K-five students using the Letters Phonics screener. So it's a foundational skills assessment, and the PASS, which is a phonemic awareness assessment. Next year, we're hoping to adopt a program, bookworms, that would align with those, so read alouds, vocabulary, and, and writing. And then the work next year would be to adopt a program for the following school year, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that would align with small group instruction. This is Garbor's reading rope. This is a kind of a visualization of how our brains learn how to read. And so in that, there are eight different strands that make up the skill of, that make up skilled reading. So this year, we focused on kind of the blue strands here, the word recognition strands, and this is our foundational skills. When we were selecting a tool for this year, we focused on the literacy comprehension skills, the red ones. Finding there's, it's not just learning, it's not just comprehension, there's background knowledge, vocabulary, language structure, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. So all these things kind of interweave together to make, to make readers. So the process of how we came to where we are today, in the fall and winter of this school year, every teacher was allowed to review the top three options that we had selected for literacy tools. So bookworms, written wisdom, and font discipline in a classroom. After reviewing those resources and getting feedback, Bookworms and Witten Wisdom were the two that we wanted to spend more time looking at. So the literacy task force came back together in March. There was about sixty of us. And we used the Reading League rubric, which is a rubric that takes the Scarborough's Reading Rope and kind of sections out each portion to look to see if those things are existent in the programs. We did that with Bookworms and Witten Wisdom. And then later in March, we had vendors from both programs, programs present to staff. And then we recorded them so everybody could see it if they weren't able to make the meetings. In early April, we hosted an in-person question and answer session for all staff to attend. So the vendors were there and people were able to come out and look at the materials, look at the books and just ask more detailed questions. After that, we've sent a poll out to all staff members to get feedback about the different options. And when looking at the feedback, Bookworms quickly rose to the top mainly. Bookworms and Witten Wisdom are very similar, but the usability of Bookworms, the teacher-friendly teacher edition and just the, the daily routines were really important. And teachers really felt like that was something that they could start using right away. So we selected that resource and it was approved by Curriculum Council. We brought this to the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago and here we are today asking for approval from the Board of Education. And then Heather's going to present a little bit more about the Bookworm structure.
That's down, okay. Oh, like, see, I did it twice too. Okay, the Bookworm structure, the teacher's edition is available in print and digital. There will be trade books for the shared reading and the ELA block. Students will have access to the books for shared reading where we'll be doing, they'll be doing shared reader with, reading with a peer. Student workbooks will be available and we're going to have them printed by the print shop in the district to save cost. There are teacher slideshows available on the Bookworms website that teachers can use as-is or customize for their classroom or their grade level. The teacher's editions are very user-friendly. Bookworms is something that as a teacher, I know I could leave the teacher's edition with my sub plans and a sub would be able to pick up wherever I am in the curriculum.